This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at five o'clock PM on Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. We will not be able to livestream tonight's meeting because of technical difficulties, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/ISD535 following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/BoardDocs. Present at this meeting are School Board members and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Laurie Samm. Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-official member, is here. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Marvin.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Dr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
We now offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in just one.
Item 2.01, approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Seconded, has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We're going to plan to take a break after our first agenda item before we move into the budget session, so that gives you a sense of timing for tonight's meeting. Our next agenda item is a focus topic, item 3.01, co-design update. This is an information item. I'll give it to Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I wonder if everybody would indulge me, just because we have three guests here, and we'd like to make this fairly conversational, if we could quickly go around and introduce ourselves. Obviously, if you're a board member, you should so identify, but if you work for the district, please identify your role, because I think it's going to help, and then I'll have a few framing remarks before I turn it over to Jess. So I'm Kent Pecel, Superintendent.
Julie Workman, School Board.
Dr. Jess Garcia, School Board.
Chief Academic Officer.
You guys, too.
Jess Roberts, help facilitate the co-design project.
Eric McCray, I am the Community Schools Site Facilitator at John Adams.
Semeney McLaurin, I'm a student at Century.
Justin Cook, School Board.
John Carlson, Chief Administrative Officer.
Andy Crofters, Director of Finance.
Jackie Peterson, Chief of Schools.
Don Barrell, School Board.
I continue the educational partnerships.
Karen McLaughlin, School Board.
Carl Bach, Human Resources.
Will Ruffin II, Equity and Engagement.
Ms. Sam, Mrs. Burke.
Kathy Nathan, School Board.
And I'd say, Semeney, it's, we are always so excited when students are here. Not that the rest of you are awesome, but we are always so excited, so thank you for your leadership and bringing us to this point. As board members know, we have sought to make youth voice and perspective a hallmark of the work that we're working to do in Rochester Public Schools. In doing the strategic plan, we had students on the work groups, we did extensive focus groups and interviews and surveys of students. We conducted the Perspectives Project last year to do detailed analysis of our students who are being impacted by our disciplinary policies and some academic challenges in our schools. This board has provided a lot of wonderful leadership, along with Will Ruffin II of our Student School Board. We have lots of interesting experiments going on around the district. Natalia Benjamin is doing work with Youth Participatory Action Research at Century High School. We have taken the Panorama Survey very seriously, the youth data that we've got. We had a great data summit with young people in this room, looking at the data on belonging. And as you know, next year, we'll be launching our work in a more systematic way on youth voice and leadership through the strategic plan. Last year, my first year in Rochester, I heard from some colleagues in the city about this co-design process that Jess had conducted initially with an effort to strengthen the participation of BIPOC women in the construction industry. And I said, that's really interesting, because listening to youth voice is obviously critical, but what I took the process that Jess has facilitated in other contexts to be is that it is really a two-way conversation, and one that brings young people together with people who work in, in our case, young people, work in the systems that impact their lives. And I said, that would be really interesting to try in a school district. And so, board members will remember that we were having a lot of discussions about belonging behavior ranging across an array of issues, from things like our discipline rates, to our academic agenda, to school resource officers. And so, it seemed like this would be a really interesting thing for us to try. And so, with, as part of our grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, we were able to provide grant funding to support an effort to bring together some educators and some students to look at the issues that they saw as being most salient in our schools. It really started, and I was probably the person who framed it this way, around what we called belonging, but as I think you saw, if you had time to read the report, the Groude of the Process, it went far beyond that, and looked into really some pretty core issues of academic content, in addition to big things about school environment and issues like that. One of the questions when you do an innovative effort like this, at least for me, is always, okay, what's going to be the practical result? Like, what are you going to do with it? And I think, we don't know all of those practical results yet for this co-design effort, but one, with apologies for inserting it in Board Docs late this afternoon and at your places, one of them is that the co-design work has deeply informed the work we're going to be doing, starting in August, in every school and program in the district around deeper learning and the environments that promote deeper learning. So you can see here, and we worked really hard to keep it on one page, and we'll be sharing this with the board more as we report on the deeper learning work, you can see we have fleshed out three core components of deeper learning, similar to what we've talked about with the board in the past, but we've defined some of the subparts more clearly, mastery, identity, and creativity, and I think there's a lot of alignment with what the co-design process talked about there around what we teach and how we teach it. But then, we've also got a draft set of characteristics of environments that promote deeper learning. And you can see there, those range from creating personal connections with young people and educators, assuring safety, both physical and psychological, promoting inclusion, ensuring fairness, embracing struggle as an indispensable part of learning, resisting bias, and restoring community. And so, we'll have teams working on those components in all of our schools for the next two years, and actually, working to measure them, too, which is going to be, I think, very innovative. I think, the final point I'd make before I turn it over to Jess and colleagues is, some parts of our work are about what, for lack of a better way to describe it, I would say, is improvement. We're not trying to create new stuff, we're trying to implement what we know works. I think our work that is impending on literacy and the science of reading is very much in that category. We need to be implementing best practice. In other cases, I think it's about innovation. It's about doing things where we don't have predetermined roadmaps. And I think we need both. We need, and we need the strategy that says, we're going to implement with quote-unquote fidelity solutions that we know work for kids, but we also need a part of our agenda that is about creating and trying new things. This discussion falls in the latter category, and so I would just invite all of us, even though I hope you can already see some through line between what they did in the co-design effort and the deeper learning work, also, relax, at least what I often find is attention to immediately find a practical application of all this stuff, so that it's really worth it. We're committed to find that, but I don't think we see all of those things right now, and that's kind of what's exciting about an innovative effort like this. So, thank you again for, I think, a really productive initiative, and look forward to conversation.
Thanks. And I was happy to see some of the criteria falling into the one pager here.
Oh, for sure. Lots of people are reading it.
So, just a brief background on what is co-design at its most foundational. It's simply including the folks who are most impacted by a particular program, policy, you know, implement physical space design, whatever it might be, to be, have an active role in informing what those things are, and not just what you think of our great ideas, but an active role early and throughout that process, because a lot of times, what we see is, it's the assumptions we go into these processes with that get exposed pretty quickly when you actually involve the people who are living it on a daily basis. And so, with traditional engagement strategies, which again, this is not to be your replacement of, or to deter us from these other activities, but in traditional engagement, the challenges we face are, we kind of hit a saturation pretty quickly, we tend to see the same people showing up, we might have a little bit outsized voice that may not be all that reflective of the people, the communities being impacted by these challenges, and we sort of put the burden on the individuals that show up to be sort of that token representative of the really dynamic community they're part of. And so, in community co-design, it's about getting a layer deeper, it's about actively recruiting the folks who tend not to be part of that conversation, and more importantly, engage them as conduits to communities. So, tapping into their relationships, their friends, their families, their neighbors, to be able to bring forward their experiences, not just their own, but those experiences of the folks who, you know, just generally don't show up to a listening session, Eric can respond to a, you know, survey, so trying to tap into those experiences we tend not to hear or see. On top of that, it's not just these individuals, these co-designers, collecting that information, but rather interpreting the information, prioritizing what they're hearing from those conversations with people they have relationships with, to be able to bring that forward, using the shared, the lived experience, shared lived experience lens, to bring forward the things that are important, so that it's not, you know, thanks for collecting this information, now we're going to go away with the usual suspects to determine what this means and how to move forward. And in the co-design structure, so I'm trained as an architect, and this was basically the training and practice structure for design. It's this iterative way of working, which is about bringing this small group of co-designers together, sharing those experiences, informing the sprint, which is going out, sitting in living rooms, park benches, having those conversations, and then bringing back the information that they found valuable at the next co-design session, which then informs the subsequent conversation. So, as much as possible, a way to sort of learn our way forward, not overinvest in any assumptions too early in the process, and follow the lead of the community as much as possible. And so, in this work, we met four different times, so we had four of these iterations, and four rounds, or three rounds of conversation, leading to those final recommendations. And so, those recommendations, we organize in four sort of primary thematic areas. That's sort of our artificial way to try and draw distinction between some of the information and recommendations, but it shouldn't be seen as sort of independent buckets of information or implemented as such. You'll see a lot of overlap in these, and it should be sort of seen as a collective, but just as a way for us to sort of break down some of the core issues and conversations we heard, we try to, in your, both in your report and what we'll be sharing here tonight. So, relationship and connection, which I was happy to see in the document that Dr. Pecel shared, is really looking at the importance of building those relationships for students and faculty and staff, students and fellow students, and students even with themselves, building some of that competence that we'll talk about here in a little bit. We talked a lot about the fact that these opportunities can't be externalized, they can't be add-ons, they have to be central to what the daily educational experience looks like, or you're just going to exacerbate some of these disparities between the students who have access to those networks and those that don't. We talked a lot about the importance of the peer connection, so students, to fellow students, particularly older students or students, individuals who used to be students, because through the transitioning, and I think Eric will talk a little bit about this, core transitions to like middle school or high school, students are really seeking that lived experience context beyond the logistics of finding lockers and schedules and things like that, to be able to understand, what is that experience like? How do I prioritize this? How do I navigate? What do I look for, look out for? That's what they're really seeking, and getting that from someone who shares some of their same values and experiences is really critical. And then finally, looking for ways to connect to organization and community leaders outside of the school system, particularly those that may share cultural or lived experience backgrounds, to be able to see what, what am I, what is this leading towards? What could this look like? How might this apply? How might my experiences actually apply to where I want to get someday? So, that being an important piece of this as well. So, it's really creating the networks for deeper learning to be able to happen. You need those connections and networks. So, we talked, some of the opportunity areas we discussed were creating structures for that peer mentorship. So, some individuals mentioned like a peer mentorship room, where high school students could mentor and coach middle school students around academics, around the school experience, around family life. We also talked about, you know, flip classrooms, where you start to shift the dynamic, the power dynamic in the classroom, to help build those relationships, so it doesn't feel just hierarchical. And things like advisory classes, which I think there's some examples of in the district already, where you're bringing a diversity of students together, diversity of age, to be able to set an agenda, operate that regularly scheduled class period, to be able to incorporate not just the academics, but again, the sort of experience of the learning environments. The next theme is applied learning experiences, so really looking, students really were hungry for the connection, the tangible connection to the curriculum, the experiences we're having, and how this connects to my life, my, the things I care about now, and into the future. And current learning environments, we heard were tended to be a bit over-sterilized, so there's obviously a right and wrong answer, but what you see pretty quickly when you engage in any co-design, particularly co-design with young people, is they're incredibly sophisticated in understanding, that's not how this works, right? That's not how my lived, my learning journey has gone, nor does this look like how my parents' professional journey has gone, where there is a lot of uncertainty. And so, ability to navigate that was really, and environments in which help us learn, to help us learn in that way, was really an important insight. And then also, the importance of, we taught, we spent a lot of time talking about, you know, you always hear, well, I'll never use this, right? Like, what's the point? Why do I have to go through this? But at the same breath, we would hear a lot of students that found a spark. They found their interest they didn't know existed because they were exposed to a diversity of curriculum and learning experiences. So, being more intentional about understanding, why are you being exposed to all this? It's not just a punishment, right? It's to find those sparks, to find that interest, because a lot of students may not know where that exists yet, until they're actually directly exposed to those things. And so, as part of the applied learning experience, really bringing, you know, connecting the classroom discussion and curriculum to the diversity of lived experiences, the assets you have in the students already in place, and making sure that that curriculum can connect to what I care about as a student, what my family might care about. Create things like service learning structures for students to be able to attach that curriculum more directly to real-world problems, and potentially, you could, related to the previous theme, be able to connect with some of those community organizations, help sponsor some of this opportunity, and build some of those mentorship networks. We talked a lot about the importance of confidence and feeling confident and having some of that, and that connection to being able to be resilient and navigate uncertainty. And the key to this, it's, in particular, again, the pain points seem to be those key reliable transition points in the education journey, again, like entering middle school or entering high school in particular, and the fact that a lot of students lack that understanding of what that's like, how to navigate that, and even more so, their parents feeling in the dark, particularly because it looks pretty different than it did maybe when they went through those transition periods. So, being, additionally, which I was happy to see here, is embracing that struggle. So, normalizing and communicating the ups and downs that come along with navigating your educational journey, as well as becoming a young adult. So, this has always been a bit of a challenge for students, but particularly in today's context, where I don't have to look far as a student to see, my peers appear to not deal with self-doubt. They appear to be happy all the time, right? Which only sort of continues to chip away at my level of self-confidence navigating these things. So, I have to be really explicit about that struggle as part of the deeper learning experience, really, that is the journey. And so, that reliable way to communicate with parents about those things, about these key transition points, but not necessarily just, you know, email blasts where it gets lost, but really tapping into where are these trusted sources, individuals and institutions within the community, where we can have this conversation, because it has a direct impact on parents and the family dynamic. Also, looking for ways to better explore and document student hopes, values, fears, early and often throughout the education experience, because we heard a lot about the importance of just creating the space to even think about these things, as well as how they might change over time, and what that means for what I might be interested in in the future. Instead of sort of backloading it when I'm a sophomore or junior, to determine like, what do you want to do now with your life? Having some proactive way to start to build that into the education experience. And then finally, this idea of a sense of safety, a lot of students, it's not a very ripe learning environment when students are dealing with concerns about physical or psychological The burden, unfortunately, the burden to create those spaces also sort of falls to the individual student. So, figure out how to create the safe, these safe spaces or these safe experiences, and they tend to be the students being most impacted by these things. So, making mistakes came up over and over again, like, what is a growth mindset and the importance of that, while not feeling safe to actually having permission or space to actually do those things? In particular, you know, am I going to be embarrassed in front of my peers? Or will my grades negatively, be negatively impacted if I make those mistakes, if I am pushing myself? A lack of safety to engage in aspects of deeper learning, basically. So, we talked a lot about like skills-based learning, where students are really being guided and graded on that learning process and progress over right and wrong answers, and we heard a lot about the sense, in the sense of safety, as well as confidence, students that start to fall behind if you're not meeting particular, instead of the focus on growth and advancement, if we're focusing on grades within a particular program. How do, how do we support that growth and learning, rather than sort of that right and wrong? And then, supporting the growth of student-driven affinity groups, where that's meaningful, I think, touch on a little bit, where students can come together, normalize some of the struggles they're having, support one another, so that doesn't, we heard challenges with, you know, even initiatives that were intended to feel student-driven, still felt too top-down, and students didn't, just wouldn't engage with it because of that. So, those are sort of the really, the crash course themes, and I want to give our co-designers a chance to share a little bit about the specific areas they sort of drew from their co-design experience.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity for us to be here this evening. You know, this was a really interesting, exciting group to be a part of. Really, it's kind of my job every day, I'm working with students as the Community Schools Site Facilitator. Previous to this, I taught Avid, and I was a student success coach, so it, I mean, a natural conversation that flowed through that we just had in class, and I was lucky enough to loop through from sixth grade to eighth grade with my Avid students. And so, some of the insight that came from this into the co-design comes from getting to see them grow up and mature over the course of three school years, and how some students fully bought into that program, and others were like, eh, it's not really for me. As a district, we have things, Meet Me in the Middle is a sixth-grade program now that we started a couple of years ago. Two years ago, this will be our third. So, we will now have a group of eighth graders who were introduced into the building for the first time as just sixth graders, with nobody else in the building. That day allows the sixth graders to meet all the staff. All of our staff, sixth through eighth, are in the building, they help with tours, they're available. So now, our students see that every, one of the adults are here for them to help them. It's not, you're not my teacher, I don't have to listen to you, we're all here to be a part of this, to help you through the school year. So, that middle, Meet Me in the Middle program, I really believe, has helped our students. Personally, would love to see it for seventh and eighth grade as well, because now we have new students coming in. JA, for example, this year, we're split 46, 54 on JM and Mayo. So, our numbers really changed. And so, this year, we took goldfish, our little sixth graders, and threw them into a lake, and now we don't know anyone, because we're used to coming from all of our local schools, and we're close, and now we're semi-divided, where it's JM and Mayo. Our building looked a lot like JM. We did a good job of incorporating some of the Mayo colors into the building, because our students were saying, we don't see Mayo here, we just see JM. And with that, our admin heard it and brought it in right away. So, they wanted our students to feel like they belonged in this building. And really, when it comes down to it, that idea of promoting belonging is through relationships. And when we have that opportunity to build one-on-one time with our students, or thirty on one time in some cases, when it's just those kids in the building, that goes a long way, because now we get to see our students and in the hallways, help them with some of the big transition pieces of lockers, and where do we go? We're so used to our elementary teacher leading us from place to place, that when we get to middle school, we really are that goldfish of, oh, good luck, let's hope to find where we're going. We have a day now where we can take time out to do that. And then, the deeper learning comes along with building those connections with trusted adults. You have the opportunity, when you have the smaller sizes, and You have the opportunity when you have the smaller sizes and opportunities to meet teachers you haven't met before, to start building that relationship and connection. Real quick, high school side of things, eighth grade going to ninth grade, we have a bridge program where cradle to career has come in and they, they want to take our eighth graders, especially those who are struggling academically and with attendance, and connect them to someone at the high school level so they have a familiar face as they move in. That is our population of students that we don't want to lose. They have bought in, they are interested, but we need a familiar face to know we have a trusted person at the high school level. So it's, it's that cradle to career, but it's limited. We only have so many spaces. How do we reach all of our students or get the students who want that opportunity to get into that program? So excited about the opportunity. This was great to get to sit and listen to students and staff talk about what makes middle school so special, how do we get our kids to buy into this idea of deeper learning without saying, oh, this is deeper learning? But it's, let's get connected with them so they want to be here and come and see us.
So a lot of my findings came and related to student autonomy and influence. Some of my findings are that as a student, we feel like we have, we need to feel like we have a voice in our district and our schools and in our classrooms, because nobody can really explain the student experience and the beneficial changes better than the current students. We tend to feel more valued when we feel like our teachers and staff understand us as more than just students, but as growing humans with unique experiences. I've noticed that in classrooms where students get to help with decisions and have options in how they complete their assignments helps students become comfortable and confident in varying situations. Being able to have different options in our classrooms gives us the opportunity to build on our strengths and to improve where it's necessary. Student interest groups based on different interests and hobbies are necessary, but it would be nice to find some way for us to incorporate these either into the school day or into the school year, because some students have a hard time attending after school, after-school groups for a variety of different reasons. And then those students that feel disconnected or struggle to feel like they belong are less likely to go out of their way to join these kinds of groups. Student-led and structured activities are important because they allow students to strengthen their leadership skills while building community and feeling like they can positively influence their experiences in the school and make their school a better place. And then one key idea that I really took away from this co-design project and this work is that students need to feel like they have a voice in their educational experiences. This is really important because it allows students to connect aspects of their education to their values, their goals, and the other aspects of their personal lives. And these students are more likely to seek healthy outlets and continue to feel like they are capable of great things.
I think we can open it up for a board member and other comments and questions. Does that work for the three of you? I'm sure we have some things people want to jump into.
Anybody want to start? Okay, I'll start. Can, can you give us a sense of, of the characteristics of the people who were involved in the co-design, the students and the faculty and the parents and how you found them and, and overall numbers, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so co-design process usually engages between six and eight individuals. It's intended to sort of build off, like we did here, existing information and be able to sort of go deeper, tap into those relational networks. And so we recruit based on who are we not hearing from and strategically reaching out to those individuals so it isn't just an open call, but we're using existing relationships to be able to tap those folks. For this project, we had five staff and faculty members and three students. We'd like to balance it more, but had trouble in the recruitment process. But they all spoke to students with, so faculty would speak to students in their school, in their classes, as well as parents that were, that they had relationships with for a variety of reasons, and obviously students talking to other students, family members, their parents directly. So it's, it's, you know, dozens, we're not talking about hundreds, but the, the point is to get a different type of conversation and the sort of depth focus, because we do have a lot of, like the work that this district did with Wilder, we built a lot off of the research that had been done there to sort of focus the effort a bit.
So I'm going to invite all, all three of you to kind of just share your personal answer to this, because I'm not imagining that it came up in your co-design process, but maybe it did. When, when I looked at the results, and of course I joined you for one of those sessions and stuff, and a lot of these themes are ones that are familiar. But I would suggest that the gap between the saying and the doing in these areas is gigantic, huge. Like almost none of these are things that people would say, what? That's a crazy idea. I mean, some, the youth voice piece scares some people, but other than that, but we have just got a chasm of almost unimaginable distance between the recognition that these are the kinds of ingredients we need in our schools and the very limited episodic experience. Am I being too cynical there? Is there actually more of it? Like, where's the gap? Why, why doesn't more of this stuff happen for all kids, you know, in all schools? And I don't have the answer to that, so I'm not like looking for you to exactly figure it out. I think about it all the time, though.
I think some of the time, what happens is I will use middle school prep as an example. So middle school prep is a program that community ed has offered, and I don't know if it's now in August or is it still right after?
Middle schools took over, so they're doing it in August.
It's, okay, so it is in August. When I was a part of it and I was leading it, it happened right after school got out. So we were catching kids right away. My question was always, how are you going to remember this in August? Because you're getting this new information about sixth grade, our fifth graders would come in and we would run like survival of middle school. And now it's in August, which also helps a little bit more, but I, I don't know that all of our students see that as a need. And we have the parents who really want the students to do it, do it. And we have the other side of things where it's, I'm not connected to school in the summer. I don't want to do school anymore. And so when we're talking about that opportunity gap, I do believe some of it comes from, we have students who have parents that push it very hard. And then we have the other end of the spectrum where it's, we're lagging behind. And community schools, I'm going to prop us a little bit, is bridging that gap as well. We, we have that opportunity to now meet these families with specific needs and reach out to them and say, what else can we help you with? How can we connect your student to our community here in the building? And we're growing that across the district, which is also exciting.
I feel like the gap can be due to like, just how different school is now than it was like when our parents went to school or when our teachers went to school. So again, with like, parents want to push certain things and students kind of have a different outlook on how it works. So it's not entirely like this giant chasm, you know, with lack of opportunity, it's just, I guess, sometimes a mindset.
I think that's probably pretty close, the assumptions going in. Also, the fear of, there's a fear of scale, like it needs to be wholesale, rather than how do we start to nudge our way? And, and no, and be sure that those assumptions of the decision-makers isn't driving out. Because I forget what the example was that the students gave about some initiative that was really well-intentioned to be sort of student-driven, but it obviously didn't feel that way. And so how are you sort of working towards that to ensure that the assumptions of, you know, twenty-five years ago, school, isn't driving that too, too strongly? Because it's a really different dynamic now. Additionally, we heard a lot about, you know, well, we were explicit about giving space for some of these things, but then we hear teachers and faculty saying, well, the curriculum police are going to get us, right? Even if it doesn't exist, right? That's the reality of the situation. So I think there's just a sort of fear of scale and how do you start? It, it's sort of like learning how to navigate uncertainty, which we talked a little bit about. We don't create a lot of structure for that. It's, you get good grades, you go to college, you get a great job and retire. And students know, like, that doesn't look at all like the experiences I've seen, right?
Yeah, I, I appreciate, thank you for letting me. I, I'll just say, and there was a lot in your answers, some of the structures don't enable it, the mental models can get in the way with it. I was meeting with staff in our area, high school area learning center this afternoon, and we were talking about our strategic plan, and they said, you know, we're all in for this kind of stuff here, like, we want to reinvent everything every day. We've all worked in traditional schools, how are you going to do it there? They really called it out quite explicitly. And they were rooting for their colleagues at places like Century, but skeptical that you could do it in more traditional environments. And they said, well, let's see. They, they called out the tension in a very sort of respectful way, recognizing the constraints that exist in those places, but they were very clear about what we can do here at the ALC and that they can't do in those settings, which I thought was very interesting and a lot aligned with what you brought here.
Director Mervin.
The late Director Mervin. You know, in, in talking with students, especially middle school and high school students, I think that, and you just said this too, that they see this disconnect between, it's like you can focus on the content and test scores, or about belonging and feeling safe, and pick one. And we see this sometimes with our families, too. They're either saying, my kid needs to feel good about this and feel that this is a safe place, or teach the content. The kid needs to go to college, make sure those test scores are up there. And I think one of the big challenges is sort of getting rid of that paradigm and saying, you don't, especially now, you don't get one unless you have the other. And, and our students have said this repeatedly, that we need to feel that belonging, that safety, because it's different now than it was before. Until we know that you care about us, it's very difficult for us to care about school and about the learning stuff. And I, and I think, you know, as you said, it's just, how do you bring that to scale? Because we have a whole lot of kids in this district who get all of this. Sadly, we have a whole lot of kids who don't. So what do we do? What's the plan? And I'm convinced there's not just one plan, so that we ensure that there's a better chance for every child to feel connected and safe and energized and to get the kind of education that they'll really be able to use. And it's so easy now to get the facts, you know, online. And for so many of us to move away from, we got to pump you full of facts, rather than, that stuff's easy to get. We need to teach you, encourage you to learn and to keep learning. So it's not easy, but I think we've got some good examples already in place.
Director Mervin.
I was really, my, interested in what Dr. Mervin tells of the traditional environment and thinking of how do we make these kinds of changes while thinking that we have to maintain that traditional environment, because it's like, then you're trying to force something into a structure rather than having the structure there to support it. But I see on, I think it's around slide twenty-three or so, when you say sense of safety with guiding principles and opportunities, it seems to me that that's exactly what I'm thinking about with offering different curriculum structures, create structures that reinforce individual progress over time, rather than overemphasizing grades and so on. There are about six or eight of these. So I'm wondering, how long does it take, might it take, to make that kind of a change in our schools? Because, you know, we want, we want to see it now, and it's obviously can't happen, all of it can't happen right now. But using, almost like using the ALC as a kind of a model, I'm wondering if those teachers might have some suggestions for their peers about, this is how we were able to do this. So it might seem to be less intimidating or less, well, this is what I have to do now. So it's more like implanting an idea in their brains and having it well up from there. I don't know if there was a question in there somewhere, but...
No, I think that the, again, it's, we tend to jump to, we need to do it all, or we need to do it at scale, or, and we use that as a crutch to like, well, then we're just not going to get started until, and almost always, we, even if we think we have a fantastic solution, yes, we don't expose the assumptions. So I think it's just, what is the role of the students in that process? Because that, that applied learning, like working on problems that they can feel and touch and that matter to them, is a much, we know from research, a much more effective way to understand curriculum. So how do we integrate those things, you know, sort of inward looking at this, how the school system sort of operates, so that students are also part of that sort of problem-solving, applying the curriculum to sort of problem-solve some of the issues they're seeing within the classroom itself and their learning experiences?
Director Mervin.
I think my, my comments are sort of in the, on the same vein. I think long gone are the days where a district is responsible solely for the student sitting in front of us for the eight hours. And I think it feels more like, wouldn't it make sense if all of our schools were community schools? Because the, this sense of safety, you know, I mean, they can come into our, our district and feel safe here, which of course we would like for that to have happened, but what happens before and after? And I also think that it would be helpful if the district take on the responsibility of the caregiver's sense of belonging, instead of putting it on the students. Because I think with, like, the students' need for belonging is not new, districts are just starting to get that that matters. And so now we have to do the work to catch up. But what I was thinking earlier was, when the capacity, or when the confidence in the capacity of the student exceeds that of their caregivers, that's when we start to have the problem, because the students are doing great, and now the parents are like, I feel disconnected. And I think it's easy also to say, well, twenty years ago when I was in school, this is how we did it, and so this is how it works. That may be their mindset, but if we put something in the middle of the room, everyone would be responding to it from their own perspective, but then if we shifted all the tables, we'd have a different perspective. And so if their mindset is, this is what school is like, and we can shift the perspective, that's easier than recognizing or explaining that away as the problem, is recognizing like, that's the only template they have for understanding how school works. And so wouldn't it make sense for us to recognize and help caregivers like acknowledge an "and" rather than a "but"? Like, yes, this is how school was for you, and this is how it is for students, and we will take the responsibility of helping grow you in this capacity, so that your student isn't essentially held back by your lack of confidence or, or lack of connectedness with the school, and let the students do the things that the students do well, which is to be a sponge and soak all the things up and give them those opportunities to do that. I think that because of our size, it is hard, because I think we do like to think of ourselves as like, well, the RPS model, while it, safety, sense of safety and belonging and, and, you know, John Marshall will look different than Pinewood, for example. But we need for the students, as we're all acknowledging, like, we need for the students to feel that they are safe and that they belong and be able to provide them the world-class, world-class education that we would like to be giving them. But I think that we also need to be very aware that even if the whole district is not a community district or community school, that we very much need to be operating in that capacity. Yeah, because I think especially with the pandemic, it became very clear that families rely on us far more than just educating their kids for a couple of hours a day. And it's going to take big asks and big lifts from us, you know, to ask for the funding that we need to make sure that that happens, but I think even though we can acknowledge that safety and belonging is necessary for them to learn the thing, I think we need to shake up our system quite a bit to recognize that we are holding ourselves in place, too, not just the families and the students. And there are a lot of things that we could do to make this whole process easier, I think, for, easier and more accessible for everyone. So I appreciate what, you know, what you had put in, all of your documents and moving forward. And thank you so much for doing the work that you did on this co-design process, and I, I hope we have more students come to our meetings, please.
Director Mervin.
Yes, my comment is more of a recognition of a
Yes, my comment is more of a recognition of a comment that was made earlier and the importance of it. You had alluded to the fact that some of the students didn't see themselves represented by the colors, you know, JM male. And how you were able to pick up on that, well, how you heard them, which is important. And I think that's part of this whole package, you know, hearing the students and then responding to their voice and what they're saying. And yet, were there other areas perhaps students are commenting on that we've yet to maybe hear and replicate in terms of actually taking action on? The color thing was kind of easy, I think, you know? And, but are there other areas that you're kind of waiting to see or hoping that we might be able to take on that you think are, not necessarily tied to funding, because sometimes we think, well, we don't have the money. And I'm not sure there's any money in costs incurred with the color transitions or infusion. So do you have a thought or two regarding that?
I know something that I would like to see more of is just more staff that look like, look like me. Sometimes it's really hard to like connect and feel like I have a safe person to go to if there's other issues I'm having, when I don't feel like someone might have some shared experiences. Other than that, I think more opportunities for like student groups that are more student-led, just to be able to like have those shared experiences and connections with my peers. Not necessarily outside of the school day, but to have those kind of incorporated so it would not be like an extra thing to throw on to a busy schedule.
Thank you.
Director Cook.
So as I was reviewing the materials, I appreciated the, I'm not sure if it was explicitly laid out or just the way that I read it, kind of contrasting this co-design approach with more traditional, more legacy, maybe even antiquated forms of community engagement, where you simply try to explain what resources are already available and how to connect with those. And I, it made me wonder about two things, like, what was the perspective of the, the people that, the co-designers that, that joined the, the groups on what they were contributing to? Did they, did they understand this as they are lending their expertise to provide the, the inputs? And then also, and I understand, like, at a high level, much of this looks like things we'd like to be doing. But we were intentionally reaching out to groups that are hard to reach, right? And hard to find the voices from. What were the surprises? Or maybe it was just in the ordering of things, like if there was anything that you didn't expect that you want to underline?
I think the, so in the co-design process, you're not just sort of following the lead of whatever's being sort of discussed and prioritized with the co-designers. You're also compensating them to try, to demonstrate, like, you're bringing expertise. I think Dr. Pecel touched on it. I think both of us went in assuming, okay, what are the set of practices? Like, what, what's the things we can kind of just do in the classroom, tweak? And the conversations, again, when you engage with people, you realize really quickly, like, how much more sophisticated people living in are. And that they continue to sort of get to the, you know, the underlying structures of, well, we can't do these things because these things are not in place, right? It's, I think, Ken, you were mentioning, it's almost like that gap of like, we're talking about doing these things, but people not feeling them. And I think that's what kind of surprised me, because it's situated at the sort of structural, relational sort of level that there are systems in place that can continue to drive some of these behaviors. It's just a natural outcome, and the students recognizing those things. I think that, that sort of was the overarching umbrella that was a bit surprising, because it's like, okay, what are the things we can do? Well, I don't think, you know, an event, it's like, oh, career fair is great to be exposed to things, but who's going to show up? It's always after hours, you know, it's the usual suspects. How do we embed some of this stuff? And if we can't, why? And so for me, that was the primary reframe that I got from the process.
Thank you.
Plans are found it interesting how often the word confidence appeared. And especially in the context of the social media issue, that the, what you brought up in the report was students projecting a false sense of happiness and confidence on social media, which leads the student to question their confidence, their abilities. And with all the conversations we're having about how much social media, the hours of, of social media and how much exposure, this is a, this is a different way to look at it. And I, I, the word armor came into my mind, like, what is the armor? Realistically, we can't shut down social media in the world. We may be able to help students learn to limit it, but when they're on it, which I think we have to assume is, is going to exist, what kinds of things can we do to build that, that confidence? And I was curious in hearing what, what are students, especially since recently we were away from our tech for a while, what kind of conversations are students having about that now?
About that now?
About social media and their feelings about how maybe the school can help them with that, how social media might interfere with their education.
I think having an understanding or being able to explain how social media can impact us, because like we consume so much of it, but we don't necessarily understand how it's impacting us. So being able to have some sort of resources on like how much it impacts us and what we can do to limit how it influences our lives would be helpful and probably help us be more present in our classrooms, because we would not be so worried about how we're appearing to other people or the fake likes and everything like that.
I think the, something that came up was the power of narrative, to like see the alternative, right? Because there's a narrative in the tweet or the Snapchat or whatever that's projecting something. And in previous work I had done, it actually, not only is impacting those around that individual, it's impacting the individual that feels like they can't live up to the projection they're sending into the world. I think it's what's the, the powerful narrative that we can actually connect to and see, right? Like, like I mentioned, that struggle is so critical to understand, like, it's okay not to feel happy all the time or feel like I figured this out. I think most adults realize, like, yeah, you just kind of pretend most of the time, right? So I think normalizing it from people who look and sound like me, that's why the sort of mentorship outside of the school system as well, to see like, this was the journey. It isn't clean, it isn't straight, it isn't painless. And attaching that to the narratives, to the experience, I think is a potential way to help reframe and realize, like, it, it doesn't look like this.
I, I might just say, not that anybody could tie this up into a neat little package and put a ribbon around it, but I think, as I both read the report, joined you for a couple of the meetings and heard you talk tonight, the process itself, like Jess's process, created connections among you, among students and staff. And I was surprised, especially in your last meeting, which had the fun conversation about the curriculum police coming to get, coming to get the teachers, like, don't innovate, the curriculum police will be here. And then one of the, the co-designers is like, there's no curriculum police, you knew it, you know? So it was a really interesting discussion. And the, there were two students there, including Samania, who were like, yeah, rebel against the curriculum police. The process itself created community, because it was a sustained dialogue. And I think as, as we enter really the implementation phase of this work, because we're winding down the planning phase in Rochester and we're moving into implementation, creating structures that create that kind of ongoing connection, not a one and done, like, not just let's have a student panel, put them up there and have three kids talk, and maybe it's moving and people get teary-eyed, or maybe the kid's just really mad and then they, everybody just fringes. But like, this is, this was real dialogue that you all had in a sustained way. And that is, that is transformative of both the adults and the young people, I think. I mean, I, you could sort of see that. That would be hard to do with 18,000 kids in Rochester Public Schools at the level of intensity you did it. But I think there's something there in that process of creating those kinds of sustained discussions of important issues that is humanizing and creates that connection. I had a discussion, and I'll just, I'll be specific. It was with students from Century High School. Who were saying, we desperately want those connections with our staff and we do not, I think to Dr. Garcia's point, we do not feel them proactively seeking them with us. I'm going to own it on the adults, and I'm not simplistically blaming one school. But they were saying, we do not feel this staff is reaching out to us for that connection. And I think you're right, Dr. Garcia, it is on the adults. Now, I'm not simplistically just signaling out one school, because when I listened to those students say it, I was thinking, I wish your teachers could all hear this. This is what they want to hear. They wanted, if they'd heard those students, I think it would have been somewhat heartbreaking. But then they'd be like, okay, this is why I'm in it. These kids want this connection with me. And I think to the point of, of structures that Eric was making, we have to create structures that enable that, because just asking everyone to do that at 3:00 PM on their free time when they're walking out of the building is not the sustained kind of a discussion. So I think lots for us to, to unpack. But I think there's something in your process that we need to think about, not just your findings, but thinking about how can we use the process in our work going forward.
My response to that, I was just thinking, so, you know, as parents, you have multiple roles with a child, but one of the things is you want to provide them some stimulation, right? You want to be able to give them different experiences that sort of work their minds and their bodies and those sorts of things, but also to help them co-regulate when they're not okay.
Yeah.
And so we need to do like the school version of that, which is where we can provide them, like, Google instant access to information as us, but then also the digital detox. So like, we want them to be able to come to us as, I, I need information ready at the fingertips and like Google, like, you know, they'll have the awareness that, okay, well, Mr. Ruffin II is not the person to go to for this, but I know that Director McLaughlin might be, or like, you know, Mrs. Lake. So they know who they would be able to go to and that that person would be open to like being Google-able for a second and like answering those questions, but then also providing that safe space of like, but now I'm going to put you in this digital detox to help you regulate because you're not okay. And I'm holding you and this is containment and this is safety. You don't necessarily need to be connected to anything else right now. Here are the things that we can do so that you're more attentive and you're more mindful. And if we have those longer-term connections across groups that wouldn't normally interact with each other, I think that's so much more helpful, similar to the, like, not necessarily the bridge, but it was the meet me in the middle. Like, I can see all of the teachers at this school, not just my own, and know that I could go to any of them for help, but I might like this one a little bit more, just because we have more interaction. But that the connection has been already made for them. They don't have to go seek it themselves.
And I also think, before we leave the topic, that it's important to reiterate. I appreciate you said that you used the work of the Wilder Foundation that, that came from the focus groups when we were putting together the strategic plan. I heard a lot of the findings of the Perspectives Project in, in the findings from this. And I appreciate that we are hearing the same messages, but what I most appreciate is that this isn't a report that's sitting on the shelf. We already have what the superintendent provided us tonight with the principles for deeper learning. We have a strategic plan, which I've noticed recently has been added to the back of our room in detail. And we are, we are farther along on this path than I think we ever have been before. And I appreciate all this input is still happening with the voices of our students and our staff and our families, and we'll continue to do so. Any other questions before we go? Okay.
Just made me think that the connection with the ALC and maybe the way to, just an example, what came to mind, is at the last board meeting when they presented, I asked them the question about what the two-by-tens was.
Oh, yeah.
Two minutes for 10 days in a row. I thought they were going to say two teachers for 10 minutes once. That's what I thought the answer was going to be. But when they said it, I was like, that's a lot of intentional contact. And maybe that's something that
Yeah.
we could carry over to
Yep.
other schools. I mean, I think it's a big lift, but I think when they described that, I was like, wow, you know, that 10 days in a row. I mean, that's, that's, that's significant contact with a student that can be helped.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for your work and for your findings. We appreciate it. And we're going to take a recess at 6:02. We'll be back here at 6:10.
Thank you.
Sustainability unless we make some of those hard choices this year. So, final couple of points. While we are ultimately eliminating more than 140 positions from the general fund, with some notable exceptions, the vast majority of the people whose positions have been, would be eliminated through this proposal have found other jobs in our district, which we're thrilled about, the vast majority. But that's not the case in all instances. And I just want to say to those people who are being personally impacted by these likely recommendations or the recommendation that I'm making, that it's painful and that nobody would want to make those decisions, that I regret the impact it has on those people, on their families. We've sought to do this in the most transparent, humane way we can, but it's never fully transparent or fully humane. And I want to say to them, I regret that impact, and we have learned from some of the feedback that I've gotten from those folks, including in conversations in recent days. And so again, with the caveat that in some places in our discussion tonight, we may want to just take your feedback and integrate it into the final proposal I'll make to you in the coming weeks. We also look forward to a robust discussion. You all know John Carlson well, but I want to also really thank Andy Krogstad, our Director of Finance, who is doing this for the first time around, and he has thrown himself into K-12 finance with, I don't know if abandon is the right word, enthusiasm is the right word. And so Andy, you've been, it's been fantastic, I know, to have you supporting John in the work that we're doing. And so with that, take it away.
All right. Thank you Superintendent McCall and Chair Nathan. It's my pleasure to walk you through the budget presentation. I first want to apologize that we do not have the fancy budget book all ready for you, that we can just flip through and admire all the nice colors and all the numbers. We will get that to you. That will be coming shortly around the time of the June 20th final recommendation. First, I think everyone here knows, maybe Director Cook doesn't know because this is your first time through this process, but we must have a budget in place by July 1st. That's just a thing that we have to do by state statute, or we cannot continue on once we get to July 1st. By way of additional background, as Superintendent McCall was alluding to, we would have been experiencing a $14 million deficit going into next year if we would have not made any changes to our current spending. Based on the assumptions that we had back in January and the forecasts and how it was looking, our expenses would have been higher than our revenues by $14,200,000. And so Superintendent McCall wisely recommended to the board that we take action on that, that we resolve the structural deficit as we were moving through the budgeting process. Prior to that forecast, we did work with a budget reduction committee, myself and some of the people around the table were a part of that process. And we brought forward recommendations to the superintendent, who ultimately went through that list and kept most of them, but crossed off a few of them and brought those to you January 24th, and then you approved those on February 7th. And I can say that substantially, we have included all of those reductions minus a couple of very minor tweaks that we've made along the way so far. The general fund, as is going to be recommended, will be a balanced budget, meaning that the revenues will be equal or greater than the amount of expenditures being proposed. As Superintendent said, the state legislature finished up their work last Monday, May 22nd. Ironically, that is the day we are supposed to submit all of our materials to you in board docs. We, due to just challenges in running the budget this year with technology not working as smoothly as we wanted to, were also a day or so delayed. But it allowed us then to incorporate these adjustments from the legislature into the budget as best as we were able to calculate them quickly for you. So, most of the new revenues are specifically in the budget and are included in the revenue side. So, all budgets have a variety of assumptions that are built into them. You can't know every cost perfectly, so you have to make a number of assumptions. And I always like to start off with talking about the revenue assumptions that we are making as we build this budget. So, we had started out using a 3% increase in the general basic education state aid formula. It turned out to be a 4% increase, so we made that adjustment at the last day there. And so that is going to be $7,138 per pupil unit. I think I've talked before, a pupil unit isn't exactly one student. A pupil unit is generally one for every kindergarten through sixth grader, and then for every seventh through 12th grader, they actually count as 1.2. We have a voter-approved property tax referendum in place, and for purposes of this budget, it is assumed at $903 per pupil unit. A new state statute that went into place now will allow the school board to renew that referendum one time for the same length and the same terms as the voters approved it. And so we would have that opportunity before June 15th of 2025 to pass a resolution at the board table after conducting a public hearing and renewing that for 10 years. There is not an urgency to do that by this June 15th, just wanted to clarify that, that we have either next June 15th or the June 15th after that to make that decision. We do have the local optional property tax, $724 per pupil unit. That is not increasing with inflation. Many of us business managers advocated that that also be subject to increases in inflation, but that did not pass into law, and so that is still the same fixed number as it has been for a number of years now. We have worked into the revenue side of the budget an additional $5.8 million towards special education revenue, and that will help reduce the deficit of 15.1 million, known as the special ed cross subsidy. That just has meant that we have taken $15 million that was for general education, and we have moved it over into the special education bucket to fulfill all the mandated services that we willingly provide. So that does not mean that we've come up with $5.8 million of new expenses. It just means that now we are planning for roughly a $10 million special education cross subsidy going forward. Same vein as the special ed cross subsidy has been the English learner cross subsidy. And there is an additional $800,000 of revenue that can be applied to that $3.2 million deficit. So we will still have an EL, English learner cross subsidy, but it will be reduced substantially this coming year. And we have built this budget assuming 17,434 students. There are additional aids that we have become aware of, smaller ones such as summer unemployment for hourly workers' aid. I don't know if these are the new technical terms, so maybe don't memorize these specifically. I think it'll be called something different. There's student support personnel aid, library aid, as Superintendent referred to. There's menstrual product slash opiate antagonist aid, so that we can buy certain supplies that we need to stock in all of our schools going forward. A bigger bucket there was the compensatory revenue, and I'm going to have a visual up on the next slide that shows how that has been changing over time. But this is our largest jump in the last 10-plus years in one year, where it's going up $4.6 million in one year. And then lastly, the biggest assumption that we have is the last year of the COVID money. When the pandemic started in 2020, legislation quickly ensued and provided three different buckets of funding, and they need to be spent by September 30th of 2024. And we have assumed the last about third of that revenue in this budget, meaning things that we're buying with COVID money in this budget will either need to go away, or we need to find different funding sources should we choose to keep them from the average year. So on that compensatory aid visual that I had promised you, I just wanted you to know that we are jumping up to 14.4 million. The state law now reads that 80% of that money needs to be spent at the school building where it is earned. So compensatory is calculated based on the numbers of free reduced price lunch students at each building. Prior to this update in state law, you could spend up to 50%, or you had to spend at least 50% at the building where the money was earned. Now that is increasing to 80%. And that aligns actually very well to the budgeting practices we were already doing at Rochester. We were dedicating 79.3% to the buildings where it was earned, so we'll be making a small adjustment with our principals and rolling out the additional seven tenths of a percent to them here in the coming weeks. I think that the biggest thing I want people to know about compensatory is there was a change in how the students were calculated this year. There was what they call direct certification, meaning that students who are on medical assistance or Medicaid were directly certified, and they did not need to fill out a free reduced price lunch application. So we know that we picked up a certain number of students because of that new procedure, which was a great, great thing for our state to implement. The problem being now is that because the COVID pandemic is over, all the families over the next year will have to reestablish qualifications for medical assistance or Medicaid, meaning that maybe a year from now, there might be less students that automatically qualify for medical assistance, meaning our free reduced price lunch counts might go down. And we will need to be cognizant of the fact that we might not have 14.4 million at our disposal in the coming years. So we'll just need to be watching that and tracking those trends. On the expenditure side of our budget, we know that our largest union group, our teachers, are up for a new contract, so we will need to soon enter into negotiations. I think there is actually a first meeting date on the calendar coming up here in June, and so we will need to get a parameter from our school board as to what the amount of increase we have to work with. The superintendent and I have had many discussions on what should we include within the budget, and so we have included a percentage of increase that we believe is responsible and very aggressive compared to what we have done in the past. So I want people to know that raises and compensation increases for our employees are included in the budget as. Our other groups have settled agreements and contracts for next year, so we budgeted for those employee positions based on the already established salary schedules. Generally, we went through reduced budgets by 5% as part of our budget reduction process. However, we did do some analysis of some accounts and decided to increase the budgets where we knew it was very likely that our bills would go up. We can't just say that we're going to reduce 5% and magically we'll spend less. Prime example being utilities. We planned for about an 8% increase in natural gas prices and 5% in our other utilities. The recommendation, again, takes into account substantially all of the reductions that superintendent recommended to you and that you approved on February 7th. The FTEs, and I'm going to have a visual, I think, coming up on this, will be decreasing from 2,677 as of January 31st, when we brought you the last budget adjustment down to 2,573. While that breaks out, I've put in here the three columns of the original budget, so the far right is what's being proposed for next year, the original column for the year that we're sitting in right now, where we started a year ago, and then the original budget from the prior year. You can see that our school board superintendent is exactly the same. Our cabinet has been reduced about a third since two years ago. Our principals are lesser in numbers than they were. Administrators will be less. Teachers will be less by about 30 positions. Our education support professionals will be less by about 20 positions. Student nutrition groups, so that's our food service group, will be down about a position and a half. Our mental and physical health professionals, so this is mental health practitioners and health office nurses, will be roughly the same but down about a position. Our operation professionals, they're actually increasing because of a couple of things, but we're also reducing other positions in that group. Our clerical group is down about four positions, and our maintenance group will be down nine And I believe this is the chart that, or graph that the superintendent was alluding to earlier. We've arbitrarily picked the 2011-2012 school year because that is the year that our Skyward data goes back to, so using that as the baseline, just trying to graphically show from there what has changed over time. Our staff is reflected by the blue line, showing that up through the 21-22 school year, our staff was up about 28% in count from the 2011-2012 school year, while at that point, our students were up 8.4%. And so, we've looked at a couple other districts, and they've been concerned when those numbers were just barely up. In fact, it's probably more common that the staff line should be under the student line. But in our district, it has exponentially been different for quite some time. We're bending that curve. We started that this year, and it's even more drastic as we head into next year. So in summary, the general fund budget, the revenue budget, is 278,263,000, and the expenditure budget, as will be recommended, barring any further adjustments, will be 278,61,000. What I am managing to is to stay within school board policy, and school board policy is saying the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, that means if you take what's sitting, basically a setting aside in a savings account, divided by the expenditure budget, needs to be 8% or greater. And we are projecting to end this year at 10.7%, and we are projecting to end the next school year then, 13 months from now, at 10.1%. So we can put a green check mark there and say, the budget as proposed would comply with school board policy. We have a chart on that. So if you remember, it was in the last year that we had the policy committee examine this policy and agree to raise the target from 6% to 8%. The magical number of 8% represents about one month of it, one month of expenditures. I have seen another school district that recently has set a target of 16%, meaning they would like to have about two months of expenditures in the bank. That would be a significant increase for us. That would mean we would need to have several years of where our revenue was greater than our expenses, meaning we need more than a balanced budget. We need revenues up here and we need expenses down here for a few years to get up there. We have been there. If you look back a little more than a decade ago, it was at 19.3, but generally, we were running in that 16% or about two months for 15 years to 10 years. I am not, by the way, recommending that we go back to that policy. I think that 8% is a reasonable and prudent policy. We recommend we stay, of course, on that, if you're asking. I don't know that you are asking. On our other funds, just very quickly, our food service fund, $9.9 million of revenue, $10.6 million of expense. That is okay for that fund because they would be projecting to have a $5.7 million fund balance at the end of next school year. That would represent about 53% of one year's expenditures. Actually, we need to do all that we can to keep that at about 50% or less, otherwise we end up on a list, being asked to spend that money down. So ways to spend that money down would be making one-time purchases, upgrading kitchens and equipment, which we do, or spending in other ways through that. Community service fund is our community education program. Again, we have a couple playground projects budgeted for next year, so that we will use some one-time fund balance there to do those. But the projection is that there would be a 23% fund balance at the end of next school year, so very, very okay. Our building construction fund, ideally, you complete all of your building construction projects, they're all done, and you end with zero. We are projecting ending with 18.6 million. That's kind of to reflect that at the end of next school year, we will still have about half of the Kellogg Middle School indoor air quality project, of which we've already borrowed the funds, and that's about the amount of work that will be left unfinished at the end of this school year. In the debt service fund, you are allowed to keep 5% of your fund balance. You're actually required to levy 105% of what your projected payments are every year. And so when it's above 5%, that will be reduced through the levy process annually for the next couple of years. So that's well within line with where it should be. It will just naturally go down as we get some negative levy adjustments there in the state, takes that back away from us. It's good news. It helps the property taxpayers pay less in property taxes because they fully have funded their commitment to making the payments. Workers' compensation, this is, we are self-insured, so any work comp claims that happen on our property or to our employees, we are funding through our own self-insurance. We are projecting a balance of 672,000 in savings at the end of the year, and so that would represent about two-thirds of a year's worth of expenditures. Our dental insurance fund, very well-funded, we would project a $722,000 fund balance. I am watching the health insurance fund. I do think we need to be examining different options there, trying to contain costs and/or raising revenue, which means raising premiums, which means generally our general fund expense would need to go up, or employees would need to pay more. It would be better to have a little bit more there in reserve, and so we're reaching the point where we need to be very cognizant of our health insurance expenditures. The FSA plan and HRA trust, this is all money that's being set aside for our employees. We have to account for it within our books. We are not sitting on $10.96 million in fund balance there just because we want to, but that is our employees' money. That is for them to withdraw when they submit valid claims against the flexible spending plan or the HRA plans that we offer. And then the OPEB trust is an account that we set up in 2015 to fund a long-term liability of health insurance premiums that were promised to employees through previous contracts. It's important to say that all of those promises have now been sunset, meaning new employees who enter in after September 30th, 2022, was the last group where we sunset, are no longer eligible to health insurance subsidies in their retirement. There are other options and other programs that we provide for those employees. Our long-term liability is right around $20 million, and so the fact that we have $18 million set aside means we are reaching almost fully funded status. And then at some point, instead of putting more money into that account, we can actually start taking money out of that account to pay the bills. And so that will relieve the general fund of some ongoing annual expenditures. So that will be great news for our district to be able to do that in the next couple of years, I think. So in conclusion, we, as Superintendent said, we will listen to the feedback and questions that get asked from this point forward, and we may, after some discussion, choose to modify some of the recommendations. But substantially, I would consider the budget that you see before us as the budget that you are going to be holding for the next few weeks. So I think at this point, I would open it up for questions.
Did you have anything you wanted to leave with, or board member questions?
No, let's open it up to the board. I'm sure there'll be a few thoughts at the end. Thank you all.
Dr. Cut.
So, I leveled the one-time federal funding of $13.3 million or thereabouts that's included in the 23-24 budget. That's the end of those dollars. So, looking ahead to 24-25 budget, even though this 23-24 is reflective of a $14 million budget reduction strategy, 24-25, we're not going to have that $13.3 million, so we're at least that far behind and maybe more.
That's a good way of putting it, if all those expenditures were going to be ongoing. Director or Chair Nathan had asked before the weekend this very question, and at that time, I roughly calculated about $8 million of those expenditures of the 13.3 are items that I would consider people would want to be ongoing, where some of the other things were one-time investments that will not need to be repeated year after year.
That's right. Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Merlo.
Yes, thanks, Dr. John. I was wondering then the impact in terms of either programmatic or annual personnel. And I'm not asking you at this point to speak to the either, but there would be obviously some.
Yes, I think part of our strategic plan work for next year includes reevaluating and redoing all of our funding formulas, and so I do believe that will all get accounted for as we work through that process. But it could mean that there will possibly be some reductions compared to what we have
Dr. Marvin.
Mr. Krogstad, Mr. Carlson, the amount of information you provided is amazing, ten chapters to read, and I think board members who spend hours to read this, it's incredibly complex, especially if you're dealing with legislative, thank you, and you may not understand. Here's a question I have. You mentioned that there's an $18.6 million building construction balance, and then you've mentioned that there are air quality projects that will eat up some of that fund. What's a healthy balance to have in that fund, sort of long-term?
Yeah, long-term, ideally, you'd run it to zero, and that would signify that all your construction projects are completed and wrapped up. So the only way you put new money into that is you pass a referendum, you go and you borrow money, you make a deposit, or in our case, with the long-term facility maintenance plan that we'll be bringing to you in July, you're approving projects and the potential issuance of debt to fund some of those projects. And again, we would spend those down until it gets to zero, and then we either decide, are we doing any more construction, or we all do it.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Carlson, you mentioned on the compensatory revenue that there was a new way that they calculated it. Did any of the buildings that were getting compensatory revenue before the new calculation, did it change under the new calculation, or is it still the same places?
Maybe, could you clarify that? Like, are you talking about specific, like, the Gibbs allocation before versus the Gibbs?
Right. So as I understand the law, 80% has to go to the buildings where it's generated, meaning where the students are. So since they calculated it a little differently, did we see a shift in where our compensatory dollars are going because of where our students are?
Probably. I would, I do not have that chart in my hand. We have made that chart. We have that somewhere in our records, but not visible for tonight. But that would be an interesting look at what the change was by building.
So I guess my question is, were there any buildings who were scrambling because they thought they were getting some money, but now aren't?
Well, maybe I'll defer this one to Andy for an answer. He sat through all the staffing meetings with the principals, so he could maybe just speak generally. Do you feel principals were?
I would say, Chair Nathan, in most instances, buildings that receive compensatory are receiving more next year than they were this year. Without going back and looking specifically, I can't tell you any lost one, but those that were getting it have more. Plus, we increased our actual allocation up to 79.3%. It was lower before, so in those combinations, gave those sites additional dollars beyond what they had this year.
Okay. Dr. Marvin.
Just to follow up with that, so the buildings get 80% of the funds generated by their students, and they can decide what their needs are and how best to use that. What happens to the other 20%?
So, we've had a longstanding practice of, up to a couple of years ago, of using that money for social workers and school counselors and spreading that money so that all schools could have a certain base level of staffing in that area. In the last couple of years, as that money, as those positions have become funded by COVID dollars, we put English learner services, because as I said, shown earlier, there was a $3 million deficit there, so we applied that to those staffing positions.
Can I ask a follow-up to one of the others?
Go ahead.
How long have you been at the 79.3?
This would be the first year at 79.3. Last year would have been a slightly lower percentage, but it hasn't been like at the state minimum of 50% that it was before.
How long has it not been at 50?
We would need to check our records on that. I want to say it's been in the 60-something percent.
Prior to your role?
Prior to the 79.3. We've been trying to adjust it up a little bit incrementally every year as we've been able to cover some of these positions with other funding sources.
I'd like to commit to get you that, Director McGlaughlin, because I think it's, I think it's a little more recent that we were closer to 60, so I think we've ramped it up, but we need to find that out. I know it's not the board's immediate decision because it's the work that's ahead of us next year, but this question of how schools are both empowered and directed to use that compensatory is a very important discussion for us going forward. One of the things that I asked John to strike from his vocabulary this year was a phrase that I heard all the time in Rochester, buy back a position from a general fund cut to compensatory. Those are targeted dollars for kids living in poverty. And so while in a certain sense I understand that buyback, it's not a slush fund. And so we, and I think our schools are eager And so we, and I think our schools are eager to do this work. How do we actually empower our site teams to allocate those resources in very targeted, effective ways going forward? So that's, we're going to have that work across all of our funding streams, but that's one that is particularly important, because it is generated by students who live in poverty at those sites. And providing, building the capacity of sites to implement interventions that are really going to matter for those kids is the state expectation for those dollars. They're not just close-your-budget-hole dollars. And so I have been trying to be increasingly clear about that. Those are dollars that should be additional support for kids beyond that core educational program.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Could you refer back to us to next year about, you know, what schools are doing with that?
Absolutely.
If I could just follow up quickly, Andy got the file that I was thinking in my head. So 79.3% went to the sites for this next budget, 74.3 in the year that we sit in right now, 66.5 was the allocation for the prior two years. I remember before that was 71.5 for the two years before that. So we've been 66 to 79 is the high point now.
Thank you. Dr. Workman.
So Superintendent Pikel answered one of my questions about buying back staff, so I don't have to ask that one. So do we know yet the impact of the, on compensatory funds, since we're not having the usual forms for free and reduced lunch? I believe the state is holding us harmless for one year. Do you have any idea what that might look like going forward in terms of, are they going to make a decision, or are they going to say, you have to figure out who those students might be?
I'm hearing that the hold harmless is probably one, maybe two years, and that this is front and center in a lot of legislators' minds, and our Department of Education, school finance, staff minds, because they're hearing from us as business managers, who are very concerned about what is the long-term impact here with free lunches and potentially not having a need, in some people's eyes, to fill out a free and reduced price lunch application.
Right, and I know we've had struggles in the past with people who actually qualify for free and reduced lunch, but don't fill out the forms for whatever reason, so there's always been some disparity there. I had something else, but it ran away.
I would love to see a system where somehow maybe we could identify through census data or some other that makes sure that we aren't missing because somebody didn't want to or couldn't fill out, or we didn't have it in the right language, or something like that, an arbitrary piece of paper that needs to be filled out to.
I know what I forgot. So would you think that this could be a major part of the legislative committee's work moving forward in terms of advocating for that? I mean, we haven't talked yet about having, you know, what we're going to set our priorities for in the next session, but in your estimation, would this be one that would rank fairly high?
Yes, I would love to see that legislative committee take that under their belts and find a way to advocate for some updated system for this.
And I would add to that, Director Workman, I think we, a year ago, we had that as a concept. We didn't have a specific, but we probably just need to be.
I think you deserve credit, you were out front.
I think we were adapting our watch though.
Well, it was. I mean, we said, we got to have a better way to measure need than the free and reduced price lunch form. This is a step forward methodologically, so this is, people have been talking about this forever, and so this is potentially some good policy progress.
And building on that, since we have members of the media present, will families be asked to fill out free and reduced lunch forms this year?
Amy, could you take that for me, please?
So far, the answer is yes. We're still watching MDE updating their information.
And how does that outreach usually happen?
Multiple ways, as many ways as we can possibly reach out.
Okay. So watch for it.
I have sort of a related question to that. In my day job, we're actually, we service a lot of MA clients, and we're actively communicating that to our clients, to say, you need to make sure you update address, that kind of thing. I was in the government center here in Olmsted the other day, and they actually have flyers up in all of their windows and elevators, so that was good to see, because I know a lot of MA clients probably access that as well. So I know we do a lot of communication, but can we do a communication maybe end of year, you know, make sure you update your MA to our. I think getting that in multiple ways will help people make sure that they do that, and I think it's a very wise decision for our community to get that communication out as many ways as we can. I had two other really minor. Can we make sure we get the slide deck and board decks? Because I found this a really good resource if we need to go back and look at things as we move forward. The other question is kind of related to Director Workman, that about legislative committee. It seems like you're really absorbing the content of the policy and finance. We were going to do an update for the board. Do we still want to do something like that? Ours might be a little bit of a lighter version than what the depth that you're doing, but ours might be broader as well, and maybe just highlight some of the key things that are related to our priorities, and we can figure out a timeframe to do that.
I think one, a thing that I would like to, though, is maybe some feedback from you after having gone through and, like, internalized what the legislature actually did at the end, that, you know, we sort of do that, come back together again and figure out, like, what are, what long-range priorities we can also identify, not just the ones that we're going to, you know, ask for this upcoming session.
We will also know when MSBA sends us the model policy changes, what specific requirements they're having us change in curriculum and instruction and other operational areas. And one of the things that was mentioned, I think it was at the AMSD summary last week, from, actually, the government relations person from MDE, is to continue in the next legislative session, which starts in January, to give the message to your legislators about what the impacts of these decisions were, and to ask them to give districts the time to implement them before they change them again next January. So I think we'll have an opportunity to see not only the financial impacts, but some of the programmatic impacts, which we may not even begin to implement until September. With that legislative session coming very quickly in January, that might be a message we're going to have to organize so that our legislators know, we're still working on it, please don't make us do something different.
Dr. Rod.
So, John, thank you very much, and your staff, excellent job, Director. Dr. Marvin had earlier referenced what a great job you have done. So could you also, for our viewing public, mention when they will have opportunity to hear you and the superintendent provide, present this information to them? And is there a role that we can do to help undergird this effort in informing, engaging our community?
Sure thing. We've set aside four opportunities for virtual sessions. I know as a parent, I got the email reminder today. So the first one is actually tomorrow at 5:00. We'll be doing that one on Google Meet. Then we're going to do one on Thursday at 4:00. We're going to jump ahead into next week on Monday night. We'll have a 4:00 opportunity and then a 6:00 opportunity.
And we will be, Director, we will be taping those for board members to listen. We decided after some discussion with the chair and vice chair that having board members there could sort of set it up as a, just an opportunity to talk directly to which board members show up, but we will be making those available to you, so if you're so inclined, you can listen to the discussions. And of course, you're a citizen, you can come join whenever you want, but mostly there are chances for people to kind of, like you are all doing with John right now, say, how does this work? What does this mean? But we'll make those tapes available to you as they're done.
Dr. Workman.
Yeah, I had a question, just to confirm what I think I heard. Playgrounds were listed under community service in that list that you gave us? I heard something about playgrounds.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, community ed is specifically paying for two new playgrounds, one at Northrop and one at Hawthorne this summer. Those are community education buildings, and so they kind of take on the ownership and the funding of those playgrounds, of their building. Does that make sense? Did I say that right? Okay.
Thank you.
And Asa, because we have had community concern regarding some of our playgrounds at other schools, could you repeat, the funding source is different than what would occur? Well, I'm not going to tell you your job, can you tell us?
Sure. Our playground funding mechanism is one of those things that we will be taking a strategic look at in the next cycle here, as we work on that next year. But currently, it's like a four-legged funding stool. There's some long-term facility maintenance revenue that we can apply to the fall protection specifically. There's operating capital that we can use for our budget. We ask our parent-teacher-student associations to help do some fundraising, and then we will look for any other grants or general fund needs, or whatever we need to maybe fill in the last couple of dollars of the project.
And Asa's already been stated, these two playground projects are coming from a separate fund.
These are coming from the community service fund, so not the general fund where we do 90% of our operations for this school.
Thank you.
Oh, Dr. Cut.
Yeah, no, thank you. So budgets are priority documents, right? And I love to see, and I think the community will appreciate seeing, the breakdown by strategic priority, at least specifically with respect to the one-time COVID-related funding. And, you know, that's, because when people can see their priorities reflected in the budget document, that's a good feeling, and you know that resources are being deployed to the things that you care about. But specifically about the, some of the literacy-specific expenditures that you addressed in the questions that were posted before the meeting, there's $900,000 for curriculum, and this might be another phone-a-friend question, but is that, and I'm looking forward to a literacy update in a couple of weeks, but maybe just to preview that, is that curriculum resource in response to the REED Act or any other changes at the legislature? Is that something that was planned before?
Superintendent.
Those, thank you, Dr. Cook, it's a super timely question. Those were investments we planned to make prior to the REED Act. The passage of the REED Act, I think, opens a very exciting opportunity to go further and deeper than our existing resources might have made possible, because there's more than enough work, as you know, to do in literacy. So those were investments that we said we needed to make critically. I think the REED Act is probably going to also, and we'll talk about this in a couple of weeks, it's going to give us a need to take a slight pause in some of our efforts, because the state is literally going to identify five preferred curricula and some preferred PD providers. I'm confident that we're broadly aligned with that, but we were on the cusp of making a curriculum decision, and I think it'd be foolhardy to do that when we know that there's going to be that official list and funding for it. So, but we're not talking about weeks and weeks and weeks, and in fact, the night that you get the literacy plan, Dr. Kim Gibbons will be here talking about the work we've been doing with them on multi-tiered systems of support, and the center she leads at the university is the primary technical assistance partner for the state of Minnesota in literacy. And so there's a nice convergence of schedule there, that Kim will be with us and is actually going to be leading that process of identifying the curricula and the PD under contract from the state. But these investments have been frankly sequestered since the beginning of the strategic plan for these purposes from the COVID dollars, because we knew we would need, we didn't know what would happen at the state level, we didn't know if it would actually be a very depressing picture, so we knew we needed at least some significant one-time resource to fill some gaps in our curricular offerings. The REED Act really does open the possibility of doing much more than that, especially at the secondary level, where the discussion I had at the Area Learning Center today very clearly identified the challenge of helping high school English teachers and other staff learn to help struggling readers, because that's not what they were generally trained to do or staffed to do, and we have some work to do around specialists as well. So the REED Act may open some possibilities for us to use some resources we were going to put of our dollars at the elementary level, that could now be potentially supported by REED Act dollars to let us go further up into the secondary level with our resources. And we'll need to, obviously, because as John said, those dollars are done by September 2024, and, you know, we have a, we have a impatience to get this work underway, so as soon as the state makes some of those decisions clear, we'll be very ready to apply for those funds and move it forward.
Well, thank you. And I guess I just wanted to validate, acknowledge that there are difficult decisions reflected in these budget recommendations, but also, from my perspective, some very exciting initiatives and some really great work on the horizon here that I am just excited about. So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And just to put a dollar figure on that, as I read the answers to the questions, there's an investment of $2.1 million that is specifically for our literacy work in this budget that may not capture everything that we're doing?
That's right, yes. That was the minimum amount that I could easily identify, but I'm sure there are other dollars that are going to support it in smaller ways that are maybe less identifiable, but those are the big.
And that includes the new literacy aid that came in from the legislature this year?
Literacy incentive aid is actually an aid that has already existed in state statute. We are not totally reflecting, I would say, actually, we're not at all reflecting anything for the REED Act, because that was right at the last minute, and we didn't know how to calculate our share in that, so we're passing on that, and we know that we will bring that back as a budget revision to you.
So $2.1 million plus?
Plus, yes, definitely plus.
I like plus. All right, I want to ask a little question, ask something about the budget reduction parameters. So we originally gave the superintendent approval of the parameters that you initially gave to us in February, is that the right date? And in the questions and answers, you provided really a detailed breakdown of what you originally had recommended and what eventually ended up being the result. Can you give us the high-level highlights of where the major changes were?
Yeah, I would say, for the most part, it's substantially the same, and by substantially, I mean, like, 95% exactly as was presented to you before. Where there might have been some discrepancy that I noticed was in the off-schedule positions, now known as operations professionals since that time. I honestly believe there might have been a misunderstanding between myself and Superintendent Pikel in that we had included in there some equity specialists as being reduced or considered for reduced, but those were not on the list, and so they were unfortunately in those numbers, and so that is one deviation I know that we are not proceeding with. But again, I would say that 95% or more of what we proposed is worked into the recommendation you are seeing tonight.
And what was the final number of FTEs overall that we reduced?
Yeah, so the initial recommendation was around 140. Because of the compensatory, because of the ability for the principals to actually spend more, or staff more positions than what they would have, the year-over-year change, as we see it right now, is about 104 full-time equivalent difference from where we're at.
Dr. Workman.
This might be another phone-a-friend question, I like how that was put. How many people are in those 104 FTEs? Because we know that one FTE does not necessarily translate to one person. I'm just thinking in terms of the number of human beings who are being impacted by these decisions.
Yeah, as Superintendent said earlier, most of the people have found other positions available within the organization for next year. I would say we are down to probably less than five instances where the person does not have a job for next year.
I think that's really important to emphasize, not only to our staff, but also to the general public, in terms of the human impact of budget cuts, which I hope everybody in this room hates as much as I do, but I understand that they're necessary. But the impact on lives is not 140 or 104, it's substantially less than that.
Substantially less, but to those handful of people, it's a really big deal.
Yes.
And building on that, to those five people, what of the other reductions, or how we're allocating funds, are going to be the most visible to people, to our students and our staff? Like, what? staff? Like, what, do these changes reflect any structural changes in how a school day might work? Or some of it, we talked about before in the budget reductions in terms of like communication arts in the middle school, but any, anything else that, when people see this happen in the fall, we can, they can say, "Oh, that was because they had to make that budget reduction."
Just to follow up on the middle school, I know that that's probably where the most significant change will happen in the daily schedule and the offerings that are available to students. There will no longer be communication arts or Spanish offered as electives at the middle school level. In our elementary schools, they're going to notice that potentially they have up to one more student in their class because the class sizes were raised by one. You know, in our buildings, as far as cleanliness, we will be nine less custodians, although next week we'll be bringing you another item to purchase some additional floor scrubbers so that we're hoping to at least offset some of the lost work time there with some machinery to do the work for us.
The robots taking over, John. Really? You have to mention that? I think, Madam Chair, it's important to note also, and we have been extremely careful about this. It's very targeted, but there will be some refinement of some of our staffing ratios in our special education services that we are still fully confident we can meet all of the requirements in our IEPs, but that that is something that has been, Dr. Obama and her team have spent hours on that. And that is something that, again, will be felt. We are confident that we are doing so aligned with best practice, and I say, meeting the requirements of the IEPs. But we know those are students that face particular challenges, and we're very sensitive to the fact that any shift in those ratios, whether it's for a teacher or especially, as we all know, education support professionals are often very, very important, kids with disabilities. That's another area where I'm sure, I have heard about it, and I'm sure we will hear about it, and we'll be attentive, attentive to that as well. I think those would be the big structural pieces.
Okay. And I assume that with the class sizes, we've increased the targets by one. Students in the classes are increased by one, but we're still monitoring if they reach that certain threshold. You want, can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, that's right. Carl and Jackie and myself, we meet regularly from this point to fall, and we review all the class, all the enrolled students by school, by grade. And if we notice that we are getting to one over the target at all sections of, in that building, we will generally roll out another staff in that rate level. We have budgeted, that's something I didn't talk about really, but we budgeted 1% of our budget as a contingency. So, for anything unknown, that's another budgeting best practice, in my opinion, is to put aside something just in case you don't know what, you don't know 13 months from now. And so, that would be taken out of the contingency. We would bring the additional staff increase to you at a budget revision in the fall as well.
So, looking forward, we'll be discussing the budget again on June 6. I assume it's possible that something could change between this draft and the June 6 version, but that will be reflected in the materials. That'll be available in board docs. And I guess my last question is, and this is not a question for tonight, I assume it's something that'll be reflected in, in a future board item. But when we first started talking about this in January of 2022, when the superintendent gave us a three-year plan for bringing our, our budget into, into balance, we're now in the second year. We have one more year. So, do we, do we have an agenda item planned? Is it part of the five-year forecast where we say, "Now, looking ahead to '24, '25, how are we going to handle that third year of our, of our balancing our budget"?
I think, Chair Nathan, the, the next opportunity that we will have to engage in that is our discussion this summer of a potential referendum. Because as you'll recall, that third year of the plan included for sure renewal of the operating referendum that would otherwise be expiring, which now the legislature has given some authority to potentially renew, and, and looking at what the needs are to get us to that point. So, the referendum discussion this summer will, will be for sure a time when we can update you on what that year three and out looks like.
Okay. Any other questions? With our gratitude. Thanks to you and your team.
Thank you.
And we'll be back on the 6th. All right. Our next item is 4.01, the A, B, C, D. Are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future meeting agenda? Hearing none. Our upcoming board meeting dates are June 6 at 5:30, a regular meeting, June 13 at 5, a study session, June 20 at 5:30, a regular meeting, and June 27 at 5, a study sessions. We've talked about the board questions and responses for this meeting that are available on board docs that are relevant to the budget. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:12 PM.